Okay, I think it's time to begin. We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilman Duper.
Present.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Brower.
Here.
Mayor Prottempery-Popezku.
Here.
Mayor Rigsby.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, we did not have a closed session despite the confusing entry on our agenda. We'll start with the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mayor Prottempery-Popezku.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to live in this amazing country and to be part of this amazing town. We ask that you continue to bless our residents, all those who work hard to keep us safe, our firefighters and police, and everybody who's working in medical centers to help save lives and help those who are not doing well. We thank you once again for the many blessings. Be with us now, as we convene, make us, help us make wise decisions. Like the waves through the water, the United States of America. To the revival of our concerns, our nation, and the God who is with us, and the Lord Jesus Christ.
Is there an item to be added or deleted?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Chief Bender has one item. Chief?
Okay, then if we make the required findings, this item can be added to the consent calendar agenda. The appropriate findings would be that immediate action is required and per Chief Bender's description, we wouldn't make a deadline if we didn't approve it. And we have to say that it came to the attention of the city after posting the agenda, which apparently it did. So, do we need to vote on that?
Yes, you would move to add it to the agenda, subject to those findings and the facts set forth by Chief Bender.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we add that item to the agenda as related by our mayor as to the findings.
Now give a second.
Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's added to the consent agenda and will be considered at that time. Now we come to the oral reports, public participation, part of our agenda. Are there any speakers on topics not on the agenda? Mr. Wiley's sitting on the opposite side and he's silent over there, so there's a correlation. Okay, if there are any conflicts of interest, they will be dealt with as they come up. Next is the consent calendar. What's your pleasure?
I'll move the consent calendar. I do have a question about a date.
What is your question, Doris?
My question is, the first paragraph of the background says the council approved the notice of completion on October 12, 2010.
Okay, so there's a motion, is there a second?
I will second that action.
Is there any discussion of any items? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved, we move to old business, item number eight, Council Bill O-2011-9, a second reading and roll call, allowing the redevelopment agency to continue under ABX 127. We have...
No, I will present this one. It's just the same, at the last city council meeting, we have a public hearing, public hearing on these items, and tonight it's just a second reading, so, and that's it.
Okay, so the appropriate motion, if someone chooses to make it, would be to approve Council Bill O-2011-9, second reading, and read by name, title only, and to call a roll call vote.
Well, I'll make the motion, and since you just read off the motion, I'll say what the mayor just said, unless you'd like me to read that in entirety.
That's good enough.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay. So we vote on whether to make it a roll call, okay. Is there any other discussion of this? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved, we will proceed to the reading.
It is entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Loma Linda Electing to Comply With and Participate in the Alternative Voluntary Redevelopment Program Contained in Part 1.9 of Division 24 of the California Health and Safety Code." You may vote. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. There being no business, no new business, we will proceed to reports of council.
Just, just one question, comment. I was actually out of town Saturday, but I heard from some of my neighbors and other individuals in town of some law enforcement action on the late Saturday afternoon. And the concerns that were relayed to me and just pass them on, is there any better way we can figure out to communicate when an incident is over, as far as when it's safe for individuals to go outside and resume their normal activities? The narrative that I was told was there was announcements to everyone, stay inside, I believe, by a sheriff's helicopter and some different patrol cars. And then, you know, after a period of time, at least again according to reports I got, was that it seemed like the incident resolved, but no one was completely sure when and what to do. And so, the question is, is there any way to communicate better, i.e., online, with further announcements as the event progresses? Just an open-ended question that was posed to my, my years Sunday after I got back in town.
Well, sir, that actually segues quite well into the presentation I'm going to do here today, how to show you how to get onto our websites and receive that kind of information. In this particular case, there were some comments made from the helicopters far as staying in your residence because they were looking for a fleeing suspect, and they were just trying to reduce the amount of people walking around in the neighborhood. I can understand how that could be concerning, hearing that, and then there's per se no, all's clear order after that. Maybe we can look at some other ways to kind of get the word out throughout the neighborhood when officers do leave. But again, this is right in the topic of what I'd like to segue into later. I think you will find it very reassuring and helpful for the folks that come in.
We appreciate your services and especially having the ability to help show a force when there's an incident like that. I think it really makes citizens appreciate your services, so, thank you.
I'm just going to briefly touch on the ceremony that we had last week for the arrival of the Peace of the World Trade Center. I thought that was very nice. I think the Fire Department and Sheriff's Department did a great job, and it was very moving. And I heard over the weekend, there were some comments from some of the papers about San Diego County not doing much for 9/11, and I think they might have overlooked us completely, but it was a really good ceremony, so.
I agree, I want to compliment Chief Bender and his team for putting together what was, I thought, a very appropriately moving ceremony. And I'm going to be anxious to learn more about how you permanently display that artifact so that we can get the word out, so people can come and take a, take a look at it. You're to be commended for what I think was an excellent job. I enjoyed myself very much and heard many very positive compliments. I have one question for the city manager, and I apologize for not giving you a heads-up on this, I just remembered it walking in here. Last Sunday, I had two people in the neighborhood where I live asking if my water bill is coming up, and since my wife's been paying the bills, I don't frankly know. But they feel that since the new meters were installed, that they're seeing, and what they're telling me is they believe their water bill has tripled, and they're not sure if they want this new water meter, if that's going to continue. Can you address that?
Yes, sir, as a matter of fact, I mentioned that at the last city council meeting that we, the city council awarded a contract to replace the water meters, and we'll be doing that for 500 homes in the neighborhood. And your house and my house, we already replaced those, the city staff did it ourselves. And yes, because the meter by your house is probably 25 years old, so it's been turned as well. And so the city been losing revenue all these years. So, that's why we sent a notice to the, to the property owner that they will get new meters, and, and they will see an increase in the, in the water bill because the meter is more efficient, and, and so.
So, so it works for the city, doesn't work for the homeowner in this case? I mean, that's a pretty substantial, is triple?
No, no, it's not quite triple, because the first time my wife saw it, she yelled at my son for taking a long shower. But, but the whole thing is, it teaches people to conserve also, so instead of, you know, water lawn twice a day, you might cut down to once a day, and so forth. And, and also in addition to this meters, it's a radio read meters, so that the guy who read the meter, instead of have to stop to every house, open the meter box and read it, now all you have to do is just stop at the entrance of the street, push the button, you can do all the reading, and go to the radio read. The goal is eventually we have an antenna at different neighborhoods, so that it will read the meters to the antenna, and antenna come all the way, the signal will come all the way to the city hall, so we are, we are limited there.
But we can anticipate any cost savings with the increased efficiency.
Not to the homeowner, as long as you conserve water.
We may get so much revenue that we can lower the water rates. Because what's happening is we're cross-subsidizing the, the slow meters, so. Yeah, it's, it's a little bit of a shock to people, and I, I wish there were a way to soften the blow a bit, because it's, it's difficult to have received positive feedback about your water utilization for years, and then have it suddenly, the truth hits you in the face, so. I know I have, I have a relative whose bill went up fivefold and was quite shocking, but...
The bad part is, we, we kind of picked the wrong time to do this because we picked the summer, and people use water a lot more in the summer months than, than winter months.
So who's going to introduce the topic? Shall we just do it as a report of officers?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, is that for a report of councilmen? Okay, reports of officers.
Yes, I have been requested by Councilman Daley to check the statistic on the crime rate within the city of Loma Linda, so I asked the lieutenant to give us the council report on the statistic on the crime rate, and also how to, how the homeowners and resident can, can go in the website and view the county sheriff data, and, and it's, it's very good. So, Lieutenant?
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, what I've given you is the stats for the city of Loma Linda for 2008, and comparative to the previous year of 2007, there was a grand total of 8% reduction in crime. And it is broken down here for you, so I won't read over it. But I'll go on to year 2009. Part 1 crimes, which are your major crimes, which I have listed in the back of the handout that I provided to you, being such as murder, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, simple assault, burglary, and larceny, actually saw a 6% increase in the city of Loma Linda in 2009, over 2008. However, the Part 2 crimes, which are actual arrests, saw a 2% reduction. 2010 saw a Part 1 reduction of 13%, and a Part 2 reduction of 15%, with a grand total of 14% in crimes committed between 2010 and 2009. I also put together for you folks a, a bar graph comparing 2008, 2009, 2010, and where we currently are in August of this year. In 2010, we had about 298 larcenies reported in the city of Loma Linda. As of the end of August, we have 172. All of the categories have seen a decrease excluding two, being rape and robbery, which has seen a increase. Other than that, the crimes are on a downward trend in the city of Loma Linda. With the comparative breakdown, looking at it, once again, there's a total of 389 crimes, including the Part 1 totals for 2011, where in 2010 you had 640. Another kind of interesting factor that is maybe just special to Loma Linda based upon the large community of hospitals we have here, would be the cost for service for psychological evaluations. A majority of these are actually to doctor's offices here in the community. As of January till August 20th, we've had 91 calls requesting officers to take psychological evaluations on individuals. Out of that, 56 were actually deemed to be harmful to themselves or others. The reason I'm bringing this up is, when this occurs, you lose a deputy sheriff for about two hours of proactive patrol, requires him to do the proper paperwork, and then transport him to a facility where he can get appropriate care, and that's generally the county hospital. I'd like to go to, show you the crime map on the computer. Are there any questions of what I went over there real quick and briefly?
Thank you very much on that comprehensive and lightning report. I like the trends that you describe. Could, could you address where these crimes are occurring? The president of Loma Linda University implied a couple of weeks ago that there is increased criminal activity. I believe he was talking about auto theft and burglary and so forth. But can you talk about, is there any trend in terms of where the crimes are being committed, more or less?
No, but again, this is just perfect timing. As soon as the computer comes up, I'll show you how every citizen in the city of Loma Linda can get that information, and even set it up so it's emailed to them daily, so that they know where the crimes are being committed in the city.
Excellent.
So, if I can figure out the computer here, because I'm not real literate, and it's not working. This is straight from the San Diego County Sheriff's main website. The first I want to go over here is NICSOL, which I would ask everybody to sign up for, no matter where you live. It's an opportunity where we can send you emails and text messages of what's occurring as they're occurring. So I'll put in here a zip code. And these are the most recent events that have been sent out from sheriff's headquarters for that area. Now you can actually subscribe for any area. I, I have personally subscribed for every law enforcement agency in the valley here, so if they send out something, I'll actually get that information. But as you have here, they've been sending out messages for the boy, the critical missing in Twin Peaks, who's now been recovered and found safe. And here we can send out a message like this, which was the Hisperia Police Department is asking for assistance, looking for an armed robber. When you get your email, it'll actually have a link so you can click on it. And in some cases, they can actually play the video, which was taken inside of the business, so that people can view that. Hopefully, we can get good information and assistance from the public in solving these crimes. Do you have any questions on that, gentlemen? We've actually used this for some of our copper theft issues here in town, asking citizens to contact us if they see anybody around any of our lighting or, or other public works buildings which could be affected by that. The next, yes, sir, do you have?
So if I may ask, back to the previous question I had, let's say somebody went on this site Saturday after the incident and put in the zip code here in town, would they have found something related to information as to what the status of the situation was?
Probably not particularly in that short-term event, however, for example, the flooding events and fire that we recently had in Compost. Every time there was a change in closures of the lanes or a road closure, that was updated so people could get the alerts. In the case of floods, like we had here once before, if you had that on your cellphone or on your page, or you would be getting those alerts as they came out. And any long-term events, as I showed there with the missing boy, as things come up as additional information, we also provide that to the public for assistance. Thank you. And the other I'm going to go over is the crime mapping aspect. You can go from our sheriff's website, hit crime mapping, and then it pops up all of the contract cities with the sheriff's department provides law enforcement services for. Click on the city of Loma Linda. And this is actually providing where all the crimes occurred between April 7th and, or I'm sorry, September 7th and September 13th of this year. So, you can also sign up for this to, to send you an email every morning, and you'll know where the crimes were occurring on a daily basis.
I'm sorry, I don't see the legend that tells me what the icons mean.
All you have to do is click on it. For example, this one here, it's a robbery, it gives you the 100 block, and what the crime was, date and time. And you can actually find out how far away that was from your residence. For example, vehicle break-in theft. Then if you hit the icon here for the police department. I'm going to try to do this, but if I... Exactly what I didn't want to do. Actually shows 30 crimes were committed during this period of time. And then, you can... Get a trends report. Have the type of crimes broken down. And I have to apologize, I'm not the... Oh, this one right here, correct. And you can get a detailed report. It's this one right here. And some of the city limits are not like they are for us, so as you can see in the detailed report, Grand Terrace's report came up here. I was looking at it earlier, there are some reports that were taken by Redlands Police And you can slide it over and look at other cities in comparison to Loma Linda. As in this Redlands Police Department, how many crimes they had committed during the
Looking at those icons, appears it's fair to say that the crimes tend to cluster around the University of V.A.
Yes, and what's interesting, and we had a discussion earlier, because I was kind of curious of what the influx of traffic was into the city on a daily basis, it was anywhere from 25,000 to 85,000. So when you have that many people coming into the city, you're also going to have that portion of folks that aren't here for the best intentions, taking the opportunity to break in people's vehicles that, you know, a common thing around the university is, I left my laptop on the front seat of my car, now it's gone. We do have a lot of those kinds of instances. A couple of these crimes actually involve patients breaking equipment, I think this one might have been it. Yeah, felony vandalism was actually in one of the doctor's offices where the person broke all the equipment during a session. Motor vehicle theft. And assault. So it is a way for, for the citizen to keep an eye on what's going on in the community. My wife's looked up to this, and she wakes me up every morning to tell us where something happened near our residence. And, you know, there is also the perspective of an increase in crime, however, over the last, I want to say month, we've done a little bit of a change in our deployment, in an effort to reduce the amount of copper theft during the evening, and we have done that. With that, there's been an increase in arrests, because we have a different deployment, which I don't want to talk about for a reason. But we have seen an increase in arrests, I think jarbed 15 to 20 arrests a week in the last couple of weeks. We've also worked with the city of Loma Linda Grand Terrace to put together a solution-oriented policing team, which targets certain crimes occurring in these two cities, traffic enforcement problems, sexual offenders, they went to every sexual offenders' home here in Loma Linda Grand Terrace within the last month to make sure that they're all in compliance, as well as we tip follow-ups, is what this team does. So you see the increase in arrests, but it doesn't specifically mean an increase in crime. A lot of these are transitory people driving through, which may have illegal substances or stolen property in their vehicle, which they're being dealt with. Are there any questions that can help you, gentlemen?
So if I could just summarize, in the case we've got viewers, if they Google San Bernardino County Sheriff, and then on the legend on the left, hit, what was it called, Nestle or Nestle?
NICSOL is the one for the alerts, it's the same one being utilized by FIRE. So any alert put out by FIRE or any other agency, you can sign up for their alerts, which is right here. You can get both, in the way I receive it, both in text form and in an email form. The email form has links, so that you can download photographs if there is a picture of the individual. And the other is the crime mapping. And again, you can sign up for this so that you get your daily emails advising of what's going on in the city.
This has been very informative for me, I appreciate it very much. The good news is that the crime statistically has been declining for the most part, with a couple of exceptions. And then I'm also pleased to learn that a sheriff works with the city to plan strategic enforcement when they see a trend in certain types of crimes. That's, that's very helpful as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for the city's support, it's tremendous, it helps a lot.
Any other comments?
Can I just make two quick comments? The other source that I find of interest to compare a crime rate to... The other source that I find of interest to compare a crime rate to other cities, if you go on any of the real estate sites, I can't remember whether it's Zillow or Fulea, or however you pronounce that, but a lot of those do have comparative crime statistics, and it seems like we always rate among the best of the different cities. In San Bernardino, there's some that are similarly low, but we're certainly always at the best end of that, and so I find that interesting. And the second comment I have, over the years, I've heard a lot of comments about, you know, well, one of the problems we have in Loma Linda are having tax exempt institutions like the med center and university, and it costs us money. Well, let's look at the flip side, it's hard to measure, but I truly believe we all see the security patrols driving all over town. They don't have quite the ability to take action, obviously, as the sheriff, but having those additional eyes and ears and patrols, I think, really do make some difference in keeping our community safe, so I think that's one of the real positives of having those resources.
And then between incidents, we could just play city council on a loop. It helps people with their insomnia problem. You had something?
Well, I want to mention that during the Labor Day weekend, we have a DUI checkpoint, and the sheriff arrested one person, and he was riding a bicycle drunk. So, and that's the only one that got arrested, so...
Well, the important thing is that the word's getting out, not to drink and drive in the city, and that's the important message, and that's why we're there, and it's not primarily for the statistics, it's to remind the driver to be safe and to enjoy the holiday weekends, instead of ending in tragic...
It never hurts to remind folks that, besides being aware of where the crimes take place, that there's steps that they can take to try not to be victims, so just, even though we're relatively safe city compared to others, it doesn't take much to have an incident, so just to ensure that residents take proper precautions, just to remind everyone that even during the day, just make sure that they keep all their doors locked, especially side garage doors and things like that, because people, a lot of the crimes is not necessarily planned, but just crimes of opportunity where people are looking around for victims. So if we just make sure that we're all safe around ourselves, it will decrease our chances of becoming victims, so I just wanted to remind residents of that.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, then we are adjourned, thank you. And there's no redevelopment agency until the Supreme Court speaks.